Twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of the Durham Planning Board. And we'll start with a determination of quorum. So we have three members present, Alan Pearnton, Juliette Kaplinger, and John Talbot. So that gives us a quorum. And so that is that. So the next thing, so we have a quorum, so we can move on, determine amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments they want to make to the agenda?
I don't.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes of prior meetings, September seventh in the year two thousand twenty-two. I had none. Did anybody have any?
I'll move, I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second. Go ahead. And so all in favor, raise a hand. Three-oh, please. Did you get the nominees? Okay, Mr. Thebars, that takes us to informational exchange on non-agenda items. Town officials, I see none, except our town planner. So would you have any comments at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Board has scheduled a workshop for next Wednesday evening at the fire station at six P.M. on the affordable housing law that is requiring towns to change their zoning to accommodate more housing. And we have discussed doing this public informational workshop to give extra opportunity for members of the public to understand the issue and give input to the Planning Board on a direction that the town could take. I have prepared, just received last week, an analysis from the Department of Economic and Community Development. And it was twenty pages long. And what I did was scaled it down to the parts that affect Durham. There were things like affordable housing density bonuses for big affordable housing projects for cities. And like, so what I did was just looked at the parts, and I got it down to five pages. So this is information that we'd been waiting for to try to get some clarification from the state about what the new law, how it is to be interpreted. It is still very much a work in progress, and this direction from the Department of Economic and Community Development is kind of like a preliminary take on it. They will be promulgating rules for the implementation of the law as we go forward with this process. But at the very least, they have given some interpretations and guidance. So Juliette, I gave the other board members, because they came early, a copy of that. And the second document is, you remember that at prior meetings, we had just thrown around some ideas, and I talked about three different options. So for next Wednesday's meeting, I've prepared this handout, which includes the explanation of why Durham is doing this in terms of the new, the new law that mandates changes to zoning. And then it announces the workshop meeting that's going to be held next Wednesday at six o'clock at the fire station. And then I've given kind of a test study area here in Durham, looking at what the lot sizes would currently are, and what they would be under three different possible responses to the state law. And then also, I've done just kind of what are the key parts of what would change, if anything? So this is, we're going to put this on the news blast and post it out here in the entry to the town offices. And then I will have a presentation to kind of give it again next Wednesday at the workshop. So I wanted to get this to you tonight, so that you'd see it, and you can look over it and be more prepared for that workshop. And we're going to try to get it out, so the public can see it as well on the website.
And we're also going to cover a little bit about roads.
Yes. But this, the roads has been an issue that's been under discussion, so I did not, I really focused on this in terms of the presentation of the materials, but we can certainly discuss that as well.
I think we ought to bring it up, just so that everybody's aware. I don't think there's any controversial, but we're just cleaning up language.
Right. Yep. And I'll make a note to add that.
Just put that on the works.
Sorry, sorry, very sorry about that. I got a couple of questions, George.
Yeah.
You, you probably haven't had a chance to digest this yet.
Somewhat.
Somewhat. Has that changed anything?
The, it really, and again, it doesn't change anything from the law. It's just how do you interpret it?
Right, like anything that we've talked about.
So one question that I did have was whether or not, and you can increase the lot sizes for additional units, that we had discussed last time, but one of the important clarification points is that you cannot require a larger lot size for accessory dwelling units, which in Durham would be accessory apartments. So that is important in terms of, if you were to do a response of increasing lot sizes, you can't apply that to accessory dwelling units. So you can look through and read it, and, and again, we'll have discussion of that at the workshop next week.
Okay. And also, you mentioned the rules. Is there any idea of when?
I mean, it took them, they said they were going to get this out last summer, this past summer. And they're just getting it out now. So, you know, who knows? They have to go through a process and vet that and everything, so. And you know, they're not operating under the assumption that, a lot of towns have town meeting in March and April. They're, you know, they're just trying to get it done when they can.
Yep.
So, and they're trying to figure out, you know, what does this mean?
Yep.
Because the language in the law was not very clear.
Great. Okay, my last question is, do we have a plan for the twelfth? Are you going to take the lead and just sit back and?
Well, on all of these things, what I really urge the board to do is look at what I'm doing as purely research and, and presenting you and the members of the public with information, technical information on these issues, and giving you options, policy options. It's really up to the board to really make sure that, you know, you are the policymakers, you're representing the town and the select board. So it's very important that you focus on the policy questions and let you, help, let me help you with the technical questions and issues like the one that we just discussed.
And my, my thought would be is, we'd ask George to do an intro similar to what he's done, what's out there for both topics.
But I think it's important for you to do an intro, to talk about why the Planning Board is doing this workshop, and go back to the, you know, the comprehensive plan, the land use ordinance amendments, so that they, the public understands that this isn't coming from me.
Right.
It's coming from you and the select board and the comprehensive plan, and I'm just kind of the worker helping you guys do this.
Okay, so maybe the idea is you present first.
I will say, you know, we're here because the state, for the housing change, we've got to see, you know, do it. Tonight's an opportunity to get your input on how we'd like to do it. Mr. Thebars will kind of explain some of the options that are out there as a basis for our discussion. Have a discussion, have input from the town, and kind of close that, have a board discussion.
Yeah.
And then.
And talk about where you go from here.
Yeah, and also talk about the comp plan, like what is in our comp plan regarding this and ordinances and things like that, generally.
Yeah.
And there are some specific recommendations in the comprehensive plan that I will include in my presentation.
Okay. And then is this like a brainstorming thing that we're thinking, or more like what we had last time, where we just sit around and talk? You know, are we jotting things down on sticky notes?
We'll definitely be keeping notes, and remember that we're talking about whatever input you get, like we're going to present three different options for moving forward. Go with what the comprehensive plan has recommended, just simply do the minimum you have to do to comply with the state law, and you don't really try to control the outcomes in it. Or, third, you look at this and say, you know, the town is required by the state to add more housing units than are currently available under zoning, but the town can offset some of that increase by increasing lot sizes. And if you increase lot sizes, you know, that affects people, too. So there's kind of both ways this, this cuts. And so what you're looking for is just public input, and you'll be doing a survey to say, okay, which, which policy direction do you think the town should move in? Should it go with the comprehensive plan recommendations, which are very much in line with what this new state law requires? Or should the town just simply say, look, we're only going to change what we have to change and let it just come out how it does, whether it more housing or not, we just don't want to do a lot of work. We just want it, we don't want to have a lot of discussion at the town meeting. We just want to change the ordinance, put in what it says you have to do, and then not worry about trying to control it, design it, anything like that. Or the third option is to say, we need to offset this increase by increasing lot sizes and decreasing, you know, offsetting it. So what policy direction should the town move in?
And so the way this is going to go is info sharing to us?
Yeah.
And then hearing back?
Yeah.
What, what the public has to say, and it's take that.
We take it from there.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so it's an opportunity to get public input and get information out to the public.
Let me, let me draw, we could finish this at the end.
Yeah, sorry.
We'll get the public hearing going here shortly. Is there anything else, Mr. Thebars, that you have?
Nope, that's it.
For this evening? I don't see, well, any residence for public comment that is not related to anything else on the agenda. So if you're here for Celebration or Bowie Hill subdivision, hold on, you'll get your turn. Okay. So seeing none of that, non-residents who want to talk about anything other than those projects? Seeing none of that, I will then, what, our next thing is to move on to Celebration Farm. And then I'll start it off by saying, because I've got to get this on the record, that we had a site walk at five P.M. at Celebration Farm. In attendance were Mr. Pearnton from the Planning Board, Ms. Kaplinger from the Planning Board, myself, John Talbot from the Planning Board, Mr. Thebars, the town planner, Chief Tripp, the Fire Department Chief, and then members of Celebration Farm. And so, and I am also supposed to ask the Planning Board members, does anybody have a conversation with someone that offline, nothing wrong with that, but we just, that we now probably need to share in the general meeting?
Did not.
Okay.
No.
And so I think that covers that. And then, Mr. Thebars, if you would give us, reintroduce it to us, since it's been a couple of months.
Okay, as I understand it, in terms of what the Planning Board would like to do tonight, because there is a public hearing, and then there is also a substantive discussion of the application by the board members present. So before the public hearing, John asked me to just kind of summarize where this has developed since the last time it was before the Planning Board. And at the last Planning Board discussion, there was a lot of, of discussion and confusion about how do you determine what uses are being proposed in this? And so I worked with the code officer, and we looked at the ordinance, and we discussed the uses. And the Durham Land Use Ordinance defines agriculture, and it defines other uses that possibly this, parts of this could fit into, but the composite doesn't fit into anything completely. So I just, we just kind of looked at national trends, regional developments, and really what it seems to be is the composite use is agritourism, which is not a listed use in the ordinance. And so therefore, it probably best falls under the general category that's number thirty-one in the land use table, and that is other commercial not specifically listed, which is, which is really a broad umbrella of uses. So that is a use permitted in the rural residential and agricultural district, but not in the resource protection district. So we did kind of suggest that moving the one part of the, or the limited parts of this agritourism business use out of the resource protection, and there were only a couple of features that were part of that, to the rural residential and agricultural would eliminate that whole discussion and need for a decision on, on the zoning issue. And then it really falls down to, since agritourism as a commercial use not specifically listed is permitted, if it can meet the conditional use criteria for traffic impacts, environmental impacts, public health impacts, all of the conditional use criteria, then theoretically the Planning Board could approve it with or without conditions. Or if you determine that even with conditions, it can't meet those criteria, then you would deny it as a conditional use application. So the applicant, since the last meeting, has also developed a supplemental packet of information addressing some of the concerns raised by the road commissioner on site distances on the road and parking, as well as by the fire chief for fire safety and, and determination of maximum loading of the building and those sorts of issues from a fire safety standpoint. So the applicant prepared a supplement, that was in the packet. Tonight at the site walk, they also presented a revised site plan that moved the, the bus and associated parts away out of the resource protection zone, so. And their packet also included a list of events that they were planning to hold, and I think they would probably be better positioned to give that information before the public hearing of what exactly they're proposing now, and then you can conduct the public hearing. And as we discussed, and is in the agenda packet in terms of conducting a public hearing, there are some ground rules that are included in the, in the bylaws of the Planning Board, and I'll just quickly go down through those, that it can either be oral or documentary evidence, the, the board, I, I did receive comments from the public, which I have been forwarding the emails to the board members as I've received them. And some of them are included in the packet. The ones that came out after the packet, I have directly forwarded to the board, and four additional ones came in today, which I printed copies for the board members tonight. The bylaws indicate that everyone who speaks should be able to do so without interruption, and that the chairman may impose reasonable time limits. The, the applicant should have the right to rebut or submit rebuttal information to anyone who speaks from the public. And an aggrieved party, any member of the public can speak, but an aggrieved party is someone who has a particular potential injury to their property rights. So that's a distinction that is spelled out in our land use ordinance. The, the guidance given is to stress that the board only can consider the conditional use criteria. So whether board members think that this is good for the town or not good for the town is not really what the application is judged on, is judged on, does it cause traffic safety problems? And so the public comment that focuses on those issues that are in the ordinance that the Planning Board can make a decision on would be most, most helpful to the process. And you will, after you take the public hearing, we'll take deliberations to discuss whether it does or does not meet the criteria. And during your deliberations, you can ask members of the public or the applicant questions for clarification, but it doesn't reopen the public hearing. And just as explanation, we've tried, because this is, this is relatively new, different from what the town has done in the past, but the purpose is to make sure that everyone has their due process rights respected and protected, and there are deadlines for making the decision of the Planning Board, so this is to keep within those deadlines.
So the only thing I would add to that is, and I don't see that as a problem with the crowd we have this, this evening, but everybody be respectful of anybody who's speaking. Basically, no interruptions. All questions or comments should be addressed to the chair, and then we will go from there. So don't ask the petitioner, don't ask the questioner, don't ask. Mr. Thebars, please direct all your questions and comments to us, and then we will then go from there. But I would like to start with the petitioner, who just kind of bring us up to snuff from where we were on eighth of August, or whatever day that was.
Great. Well, thank you for having me here, having us here at Celebration Tree Farm and Wellness Center. And yeah, to just note a few of the changes on events, I think particularly. So after a conversation with our neighbor Melanie Wozine, who also submitted a letter in talking about what would work for her as our immediately direct across-street neighbor, we agreed to limit to two events per month with amplified music, which includes member rentals or any of our own events, including our variety show. And those would be just April through October, so six months out of the year. So a total of twelve events with amplified music, or twelve days of the year, and then having remaining three hundred and fifty-three days of the year with no amplified music. We also reduced the numbers of people as well. So originally had said up to a hundred people, we are going to reduce that to fifty people or less, with the exception of our Celebration Market, which is an annual craft market we hold during our Christmas tree farm season. Generally, it's, it's people coming and going in that market, so there'll be, you know, more than that over the course of a day. But that is a, you know, a great event to support the local economy. We also had talked about holding two to three weddings. We have decided not to host weddings. We decided that ultimately just, we want to do smaller events, focus on our mission of education and community and culture, and so decided not to do that. As we mentioned in the packet, yeah, like our, the events that we would be hosting, we do monthly variety show where people can share their, their talent and creativity, or, or another show within the barn that has, you know, similar kind of community art and music, and then the Celebration Market. And then we would continue to allow the, allow the barn to be rented out by members, or the yurt to be rented out by members. And, you know, that would be only recorded or acoustic music, you know, not at a loud volume if it's recorded. And, you know, all of the events now, we had originally said, it could go, we said some events might go until ten, we're going to cut off all events at nine P.M. as well. And so again, those, those rental by members, though, that's, that's included in those twelve, twelve events of amplified music a year. I mean, just to be really, really clear, I mean, our intention is not to be a concert venue. We're not trying to make this into, you know, something where we're having loud, you know, hey, we have twelve nights, and we have, we have twelve loud bands. That's not our intention at all. If you've been to our variety show that we had, it's a very low-key, very community-oriented, and most of it's acoustic. We do have a microphone, so that people's voices can be heard more clearly, but it's not a loud event. And then our workshops and retreats, you know, some of them might have quiet recorded music as a part of it, or acoustic music at times, but again, that's very limited. And those workshops and retreats would be during the day. I mean, they're not, again, nighttime events. Again, those would be no more than fifty people. So I think those are the, the main, you know, kind of changes on the event side. We did, you know, talk a bit about parking when we had the site visit, looking at the different parking arrangements. And then there is also the document that addresses both fire concerns, fire chiefs' concerns, and the road commissioners, which, you know, are happy to work with them further to really look at how we can, you know, further address those concerns. So unless there's, I mean, I would say I could share more, but I want to create space for the public comment now, unless there's anything else that's important to share.
Okay, if you will step back, and then I will open it up at, official timekeeper agrees with me, seven fifty-six, we'll open it up for public comments. So is there anybody who would like to speak either for or against the project, the proposal?
Well, okay. My name's Greg Grigsby, I live in Bridgeton. I know Jonah, I've known Jonah for, I don't know, maybe three years or so, because we're in the same men's group together, and we meet most, most Thursdays evenings throughout the year. And so I just wanted to support Jonah. I can't, I can't really speak to any of the technical stuff, I can only speak to who Jonah is as a man. He's a man of honesty, cares about his community. And, you know, that means a lot to me. And so as a, you know, if he's, whatever he says, I knows the truth. So, you know, if he says it's, you know, I never heard him speak of concerts, but if he says it's not about concerts, it won't be about concerts. So I don't know what kind of concerns the people of the board may have. I just want to speak to supporting Jonah as a man of character.
Okay. Any questions?
Greg, could you spell your last name?
Grigsby, G.R.I.G.S.B.Y.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for or against? Okay, there were several comments, written comments, email comments. George, had, they had a chance to see any of those?
Yes, we did receive four more today. I'll give you a copy.
Give you a quick chance to look at those, but, and I think the board members, they were, some of them were in our packet, and then others, we've been handed written copies today, so. I can take a shot at, several of the letters were very, were positive, or emails. There were some folks who raised concerns, so I think I'd like to address those or announce those and ask the applicant to, to address them, if that's appropriate there, Mr. Planner? Just in a search form?
Can I ask, where did, did we get, so I saw all of the comments for people that were pro the project, there's some that are against.
There were a couple that were against Jane Rice.
Okay.
The Wozine one is, is in the packet.
Okay.
And then Jane Rice also submitted an email, which is in the printed ones, and as well as.
Also online.
Yeah.
It was in an email.
Okay.
Specifically, yeah, George had it specifically in an email.
Okay.
It's, the one that, the first page is Heidi Randall.
Yep.
Jane Rice is in that, in that part. If I've got a copy here, if you need it.
Yeah, I've got one somewhere.
George, just go ahead and leave. And this isn't, there were positive comments, so I will.
Yeah.
And I think you've seen those, or helped drum them up, but, okay. So this first one is from Jane Rice, who I believe, actually I know lives on, close to you on Bowie Hill Road. And so just got to go summarize her comments or hit the key points. So her first concern is, the traffic that is going to be brought on the road, and that's estimated number of cars that are going to be there. And I think, and perhaps the discussion of, you had, currently have ninety members, and you want to add more to that, could you kind of go discuss for the record and for my edification, what the ninety members, what they do, how they participate?
Yeah, so we have, currently have ninety community-supported forest members. This community-supported forest membership program is something we launched this past year to really build connection to our customers, and really build the relationship in a more ongoing way. Folks might be familiar with the community-supported agriculture model. This model has been used in agriculture here in Maine and all throughout the country for many, many years. In this model and community-supported agriculture, members receive often a weekly share of vegetables, they might have some events they do at the farm, sometimes they, those members then volunteer at the farm. And that's been a very successful model in supporting small-scale agriculture here in Maine. We, as a Christmas tree farm, decided to kind of evolve that model to the tree farm, where our members get a tree, a Christmas tree, they get a wreath, and they get what we call our little tree, which is a, a tree that's about this big on a birch base. And so that's really, you know, one of the main benefits of membership, is that those products. And our members also do get year-round trail access. And so we launched this membership last year, and as, sharing the site walk, currently of our ninety members, we've had about five members use the trails, probably about a handful of times. It's something, you know, we, we hope to have some more usage. We definitely do not expect, and would not, also not want, those ninety members to be using those trails on a, you know, daily or weekly basis. I think it's, with so many great places to recreate in this area, there's a lot of different options for folks to use different trail systems. I think it's, with so many great places to recreate in this area, there's a lot of different options for folks to use different trail systems as well. And then additionally, the members are, there's, we want to have them be able to hold events at the farm as well. So, this is not a guarantee of, hey, you're a member and you can just do whatever, you know, come and hold any event. No, it's, it's, would be, you know, again, given our policies, our guidelines, given the restrictions that we place on events. And they would simply get a discount on, you know, being able to hold an event on the farm. Similarly, when we have workshops, we would provide a discount for them for the workshops. You know, similarly, if you're a member of many different organizations, that discount, you know, is there. It's, so, that's the membership. I know there is also, just while we're speaking about it, some confusion around the cooperative ownership piece that was mentioned. So, we'll say, I've been working with cooperatives as an ownership structure of business for many years. Cooperatives are a very well-known in agriculture and many different forms of business ownership. And we've, what we've created is a worker and community-owned cooperative. So, right now, the four of us as worker owners, we own the business together. Those community-supported forest members will have the opportunity to apply for ownership. They would have an additional thousand-dollar investment. And they would also then have to be approved by us, by the existing worker owners. They would have a minority position on our board. And so, really, the control would still, the majority of control would still be in the hands of workers. And so, and would, and just as like, if you're a member, say, of the Portland Food Co-op, a grocery store in Portland. As a, I'm a member owner, I don't go in there and tell, you know, the person working at the cash register how to do their job or what they should be carrying in the store. In the same way, they have a general manager, we have management that controls the operations and really guides on what we do on a day-to-day basis. And so, you know, I think there's, it, it sounds like in Jane's letter, there's some fear that, you know, hey, if we have community owners, that they might then, you know, decide to do all sorts of different things at the farm. That's really not what would happen, because again, the majority control of governance and then the management is all in the hands of the worker owners. And also, just to further clarify as well, so, mention there's Land and Common Community Land Trusts. They own the hundred-and-ten acres that we farm on. Land and Common does have a membership. That membership is distinct and separate from our community-supported forest membership. And they do not have general access rights to the land. Just like other land trusts throughout the state, there's membership bases that support those land trusts. And, you know, provide some financial support, but they're not, again, they're, they're not having, you know, general access to the land. I hope that was clear, and I, you know, welcome other further questions to clarify.
Appreciate it, and I think, and we can have this discussion in general, I think there is concern that she expresses about, yeah, I think we talked about this when we were on-site as well, about the space for parking. You show it as twenty-something lots and parking spaces at a hundred-and-twenty-five feet, so a six-foot space. You know, so we need, we need to talk about parking, and then we can continue that on the.
Yeah, totally, I mean, you know, and again, as I said earlier, we can talk about what, you know, what makes sense in that spot based on, you know, what we need to do.
Another one is, and I wanna make sure I understood that, the concern about noise, amplified music noise going past to ten-thirty. Did I understand you to say you're committing to nine PM?
We're committing to nine PM, and I, I don't know, she said it was past ten-thirty, that we did have an event and it was ended at nine.
History doesn't matter, we're going forward is the issue.
And ended at nine-fifty, so I don't, yeah, I'm not sure what.
But going forward, all your.
Yeah, it would end at, yeah.
Events will end at nine PM, okay. And then, the concern about the hundred-and-ten acres, the use of that, what is before us is eight-point-three acres, parcel forty-three, I think. That's where you plan to run this.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, that was questioned, so.
Yeah.
I think those were her concerns, I think Ms. Voisine had similar concerns.
Yeah.
And then there were several letters of support from other folks. Like I said, I didn't want this to be, and the members of the board have had an opportunity to see those, so.
Yeah.
I didn't want you to think that I was only looking at the negative ones, but.
If I could just speak to Melanie Voisine's concerns, we, so we did, she wrote in her letter, we met with her, talked with her about, and really, you know, through the conversation, you know, developed the limits on events. So she, you know, expressed concerns about it, but then said, you know, yes, she is all right with two events, or, two events per month, April to October. And also expressed, you know, support for the, the bus, support for the celebration market, and also support, you know, for us as friendly and cooperative neighbors that have worked with her. So just wanted, like, there's concerns, but also just we've already had conversations to address some of those concerns. And that, and really what you see in front of you as far as the event, the limits on events, that really came out of that conversation with her.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, are there any other questions, 'cause we'll, I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven?
Oh, six.
Oh, six. If the official timekeeper agrees, then. So, what that means is that there will be no more input from the members of the public unless one of the planning board members asks you a question, so. Okay, I will then open it to our planning board members to see what questions they, they would like to ask.
I have a general question, so we, I saw Ellen, that, that document, it was really well-written, by the way. So we're deciding, or we're going to decide or think about number thirty-one? Is that kind of where we've landed, or up for discussion?
I, I think that's where we're, yes, the, the decision would be based upon the criteria of thirty, of item thirty-one, commercial uses, other, I think other is the best way to say it.
So the definition is personal service, retailer wholesale, business service, financial service establishment, all other commercial services not otherwise listed. It would be the latter of that piece.
It'd probably be the other, all other.
Yeah, so do we need to decide that now, or no?
No, it's just to try to help the board under, 'cause there were a lot of questions.
We do, don't we, because it's, depending on the use, has different requirements, right? I mean, 'cause one of my follow-up questions has to do with the resource protection. And so I know this one, nothing is in resource protection, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, I guess I'll get to my, my question. Everything proposed mostly has been pushed out of resource protection, except for, and maybe it's the leach field, is that new, proposed?
The existing, there's an existing leach field that got approved by the former code enforcement officer. His name is escaping me, right?
Bob.
Bob, exactly, Bob Forrest. So that got approved last, was it last year or the year before, yeah.
Okay, so that's not part of this application?
Not the existing one, there would be a, just a slight expansion of that, basically putting in just, just, and which is in the proposal. And so that would be just a slight expansion that would accommodate the additional water from the sink and shower.
Okay. So that small piece would be in the resource protection, right?
I, I believe, yeah, it's like, essentially the, where the leach field is currently. So if you look here, where the leach field is currently.
Yep.
It's literally like the expansion would be right at the end, so.
I've got that.
It would be probably about, you know, two square feet that's in the resource protection zone, maybe? If that, yeah.
Okay.
My follow-on question maybe is a technical one, is someone smarter than I am, can, is a leach field in the resource protection area, okay?
I don't think that the code officer would have any issue with that being located in the RP.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was like, anything to do with the application had to be outside, or if it was specific things, but it sounds like. Okay, all right, well, if we can vouch on that, then.
Yeah, I don't think it's a problem.
Okay. All right, I mean, either way, I do think that it would be good to have an idea of what type of land use we are going to be calling this thing. I'm okay with other commercial services.
And again, I think, based on all of the information that was submitted and the analysis, you should think of it as agritourism.
Yes, but because we don't have that.
An agritourism business, which is not specifically one of the listed, therefore it goes under number thirty-one.
And so the rules that apply to thirty-one apply here, I think is what she was saying.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So I think the consensus is thirty-one, then.
Okay. I have more, but I wanna let some other people talk.
Ellen, did you?
Well, one of the, one of the questions I, I know we're, we're talking about composting toilets. And not knowing the specific mechanism of the chemical reaction of doing that, I was questioning about the sanitation of those.
Question about sanitation?
Right, and how much sanitation does it take away from actually composting process? Of the toilets itself, if you, if you're using buckets to do that.
Yeah.
And what is the sanitation of those?
Oh, what is the sanitation of those buckets? I mean, so far, we've just washed them and then used them again. I mean, 'cause they're not being touched by, you know, there, there's a toilet seat, so those, the toilet seats were sanitizing. But the buckets themselves were not.
Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause if you, if you added too many chemicals to that, it would take away the whole process, wouldn't it?
Um, I mean, a simple bleach solution wouldn't, you know, ruin the process or anything like that, but, yeah. But there just hasn't been a need to necessarily, you know, do that. I mean, there's times when we have, you know, sanitize those buckets further, but.
And one other item, we brought it up during the site review, and I think it's, it deserves conversation about it and letting people know that we addressed it. And one of the issues was about the smoke detectors in the barn, and I know that the fire chief said there's a specific requirement that he goes through, it's not just arbitrarily. But I think it's warrants saying that we've addressed that, and we certainly honor what the fire chief decides on that.
Yeah.
And Chief Tripp, I stopped talking about something else, but he asked me to, to point out that he, you, the applicant, if it, if it's approved this evening, we'll have to work with the code enforcement. And the chief, and he mentioned a lot of things at the thing, but the, just, just 'cause the barn's big doesn't mean you get to have X number of people in there, so. Setting a capacity, what your fire requirements can be for extinguishers, all those kinds of things.
Yeah.
You'll have to work with, with the chief and with code enforcement, Mr. Plummer on that piece.
Yeah.
But yes, go, go unnoticed that just, any approval you get here doesn't mean that, that you don't have to follow all those fire safety and, and other rules, so.
Yeah, for sure, and, you know, definitely we look forward to working further with Chief Tripp and, and Plummer, code enforcement officer, you know, and recognize that, you know, anything, you know. We know that this is the first phase, and that's really the, the details to work out, so we're, you know, happy to work with them. And, you know, and similarly, I mean, just talking about, you know, composting toilets, I mean, I know actually, Plummer has experience with composting toilets, you know, could work with us to make sure that that's, you know, up to the proper codes. So we're happy to, you know, any of those things we need to do to work with whoever we, we need to work with, yeah.
One of the items that the road commissioner brought up was about site turning into the driveway. He talked about no parking signs, but based on our presentation tonight, based on our specific site visit today, there would be a parking attendant or a staff member that would be there, making sure that no one is parking on the street.
Yeah, yeah, and so we've done, I mean, so, and if you noticed when you came in today, but we did, we do have some no parking signs on the road now. We do nor, like, during our tree farm season, we actually have about double that normally. So we have them across the street, we have them on our side of the street, and so we really, you know, make sure that we don't have anyone parking on the road. And, yeah, so that's something, you know, we do, you know, obviously it's sometimes challenging 'cause someone starts and, but we, you know, even that, sometimes we're chasing after people, it'd be like, you need to move, you know, and get your vehicle inside, yeah.
Can we stick on that topic for a second? So site distance was brought up a couple of times from, I think Jane's email and others. That, you've got permits for both of those driveways already, right?
I mean, they were pre-existing driveways when we moved there.
So I don't know, do, do, do we need another, does he need a permit?
Well, let me just clarify, he is asking for a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
And one of the criteria is traffic safety.
Right.
So notwithstanding the fact that there's a use that occurred in the past to tree farm.
Yeah.
Their community events, now they have to satisfy the burden of proof that the, that what they are going to do, the additional use is gonna be safe from a traffic standpoint.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking if there's already a permit for the road, the driveway, does that already cover?
But again, if those driveway locations are unsafe, they've been there for decades, that's why they're there, but if they're unsafe for the proposed increase in use, the conditional use, you can deny the permit or require them to make improvements to, to address the safety concerns.
Okay.
Right, at the same time, whenever we have granted, it opens up the option to be accepted or not. But with any new, with any driveway that is on a town road, the site distance is subject to approval by the road commissioner. So once, and I'm, I have total confidence in, in the road commissioner making that decision, yea or nay?
Right, he says, I haven't seen the access, but it's the one, if it's the one they have onto the field area now, I believe it's a hill with a vertical curve, that'd make it difficult to see, but that's all, you know, there's no. So, do we need to wait further to hear from Kelvin, or should we talk about maybe requiring some sort of like site distance?
Well, one of my questions, concerns is that when you look at the ordinance for commercial use, there is a site plan required to discuss parking, parking and access. And so, what I'm talking about is another requirement, which is a, a formal site plan, which is more precise or, I don't know what the right term is, than what you provided us. And with that would, you'd have to delineate your parking spaces to show that you've got enough there to do what you want, and would have to include a verification by an engineer or a traffic guru that says you've got, as I mentioned, on-site tonight, minimum of three-hundred-and-sixty feet, max, you know, it's four-hundred is ideal, minimum of three-hundred-and-sixty feet. So, because that has been an issue primarily from the road commissioner, but truth will change, you know, Christmas trees are one thing, but when you start having events and other things. And as I said, I drive that road frequently, I try not to speed, but I guarantee I'm one of the few that try not to speed there.
I mean, I will, I will say that I, I mean, honestly, our events are gonna be less traffic than what we've currently done with Christmas trees. I mean, we are, you know, we have been a successful Christmas tree farm, and, you know, so that's an intense amount of traffic in a short period of time. And, you know, our events, again, under fifty people, workshops, you know, those, those are, I mean, under fifty people, twenty-five cars maybe, which would be really, again, in twenty to twenty-five cars if, you know, not many people.
If that gets, all gets factored in, but the code, the ordinance says that because you're going for a commercial use, which is what you're doing, it does require a site plan.
Can you, can you, where is that?
Yeah, I can, I can, let me, let me address that issue.
Please do.
So one of the questions is, you know, up until this point, you've been using the parking for an agricultural use. And so that's a permitted use, there's no, there's no review, you haven't built any new parking lots, so there's no site plan review that's triggered. So the ordinance specifies, and this is under our section eight-point-one of the, of the land use ordinance.
Sixty-nine is what I pay, sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, yeah. And, so basically the applicability, so there's two, two parts to review of commercial development in Durham. So there is a general conditional use review, which looks at a proposal, and there's a difference between the agritourism tree farm that you're proposing and a Irving version of the get-and-go. If they were, someone, if they were to come in and propose, we're gonna go put in ten gas pumps, they're gonna have, you know, all the stuff that they have. That is typically goes through not just a conditional use to determine whether this location is gonna cause drainage, safety and other unusual problems. But it also goes through very specific review of the lighting, the landscaping, the stormwater, all of that stuff associated with the commercial development. Most of the business that occurs in Durham, although you could get something like that, most of it is just like this level. It's a home-based business or agricultural business, and so they're not building large parking lots, lots of paving, they're not. and so they're not building large parking lots, lots of paving, they're not putting up lots of large buildings, so most, you probably won't hit a lot of site plan reviews in Durham, however, there is, there are triggers that say when you do need it, so if you are building any new construction for commercial purposes, you need a site plan approval, other than agricultural buildings. Secondly, expansions of existing commercial buildings also require site plan review, again, other than agricultural buildings. Creation or expansion of parking, there is a proposal here, you've got a sketch plan showing expansion of parking, the construction or expansion of non-residential parking areas and access drives involving an area of more than twenty-five hundred square feet.
How much are we talking here?
Within any three-year period excluding gravel areas used for park, agricultural uses. So, again, this gets into, is this agricultural or is this commercial? I think that the community events parts of it pushes it out of agriculture, so, but it is, it's a questionable area.
I think the consensus of the board was, it was going to be item, item number thirty-one, which is.
That's correct, other commercial.
Other commercial, which, you know.
But is the parking being used for agricultural purposes, based on that, it would be being used for commercial purposes. And then the question is, are they actually constructing, or are they just designating parts of the fields that are going to be used, and there's really no construction? So, this is kind of, this is a gray area of whether they trigger it or not, but whether they do or whether they don't, under sec, section seven point three, I think it is, seven point.
Well.
Under CU?
It is seven point.
I just.
Hold on, I really.
We, we set a precedent on this by approving a situation on Stackpole Road where there were actually wedding venues, and the parking was in a field, and we did not require a site plan for parking on that.
Was that a conditional use? That was a conditional use, right?
Yes, it was.
And was that done before or after the adoption of the land use ordinance amendments in twenty nineteen?
Wasn't that, was that last year, the, yeah, the?
I think so.
Todd.
After.
Todd Bellidou's facility, yeah.
So, was that a change?
Yeah.
George?
Mm-hmm. So, there is in the conditional use criteria, and this was specifically put in for that reason, if there is some aspect of a conditional use application that raises issues that are normally covered by site plan review, you can pull out the parking standards and requirements from site plan review and apply them without putting them through a full site plan review process. So, for example, there are standards in there for parking that you could apply to their parking layout and say, does it meet the site plan review parking lot standards or not? So, just from the sidewalk, if you, if you would be okay, I could show you what some of those issues are that would be, that might help.
Sure.
Determine, if I can find a pin. Yes, there are some. So, this would be an example, so typically in site plan review, you have parking lot design, and so you come in, you have your access, and obviously, site distances are an issue, the width of access for two-way circulation is an issue. And so, then you come into the parking lot, and they're proposing something like this, and, and then you have an aisle, and there are specific measurements for the distance that this needs to be, whether it's one-way or two-way, and obviously, two-way, this needs to be wider, generally, you go like twelve feet for one-way, eighteen feet for two-way circulation, so that two cars can go by, and then the parking space sizes, these are typically nine feet wide by twenty feet long for standard, seven feet by fifteen feet, so all of those standards for all of this stuff are contained in site plan review, and the construction of this ordinance says, if somebody's proposing a parking lot design, you can apply those standards under conditional use review and put conditions on to that effect, without putting them through a whole site plan review process.
Well, that brings up the question for me, anyway, is to the applicant, were you anticipating an entrance and an exit, or would it be at the same, because you have two driveways?
Yeah.
Would one be an entrance and one be an exit?
They, they don't connect to one another.
They don't?
Yeah, so, I mean, right now, you know, we, yeah, with the driveway that's near our house, we, again, during our tree farm season, we will have people coming in and out of that, we generally have, where there's kind of an island, we'll have one-way traffic go around the island with the other one coming out, similarly, on the other overflow area that we use for, for the agricultural season, then that, you know, generally, yeah, folks will come in and out of that. I think, just one thing I'll say, I mean, this is, you were, you know, talking about the, I mean, so as we are framing this now under agritourism, I mean, so all of the parking is for agritourism, I mean, so agricultural tourism, agricultural use, I mean, and also to say then, the, the area that we looked at, that is the overflow parking, really, that's only used for agricultural purposes during the tree farm season.
Ms. Chairman, I found the specific reference.
I did too.
Yeah, it's seven point five B, which says, design aspects of approval conditions. For projects requiring site plan approval, the specific design of improvements required to mitigate impacts under seven point five A will be determined during the site plan review process. For projects not requiring separate site plan review and approval, the planning board may apply the design standards of Article Eight in establishing specific approval conditions. So, one of your conditions could be, they need to get an engineered, again, they're not proposing to build a parking lot, but they need a professionally prepared parking plan that clearly establishes, and out there, we, just what I observed was the organic garden kind of is into what would normally be the aisle space for the parking on both sides, so if they have the capacity to develop a professional parking plan, they can try to do that and see if it passes all of the site plan review standards for parking and access, and that could be a condition of approval.
I think, my thought is that we need to, if we've decided that it is a commercial service, we need to decide, is this requiring a site plan or not, and then we go from there, right?
I think what, I mean, I tend to agree, I think there's two reasons it does, one is the parking and the access, the other is the expansion or move, you are adding a structure, the yurt, the construction and placement of any new building or structure for non-residential use, including accessory buildings and structures used for non-residential purposes other than agricultural building, and I would argue that the yurt is not an agricultural business, you know, I thought, playing a bit of devil's advocate there. So, there's two reasons why I think it needs a site plan, but if, but you, but you have said, Mr. Thibards, that we can elect to say, as a condition of approval.
You can apply the site plan review standards that apply to their application.
You must come up with a drawing that shows us where this is and how, because you were kind of drawing a circle, and the patio or deck may go here, but a little more precision than that, because I don't think you can park as many cars correctly on what, where you're planning, and now you do have room in the overflow, I think you could probably get the right number of cars between the two, two parking spots, but then you have two entrances that you have to deal with. Greatest concern for safety is the line of sight, the road commissioner, and I would want the road commissioner to bless those entrances, and you tell him what the line of sight is.
That would be a condition.
Yeah, that would definitely be a condition.
But I do agree with you about, I, based on, I saw it tonight, I think, based on the overflow and where we actually park, there would be enough.
Yep.
But I don't have, this is the visual I see, I don't have the actual dimensions behind that. I, I'm just, you know, we are here to make sure that it's safe for all the individuals that would be using the facility.
So, what you're saying, George, is that if this, if we say that this is requiring site plan review, that we can pull some of it into site plan review, and the rest, some of it can stay out?
That's correct.
That's kind of what you're saying.
You can pull in whatever parts of the site plan review process and standards apply to what they're proposing to do and use those standards.
Yeah, for just those pieces, and like you just said, the new building construction and the expansion of the parking.
Yeah, and you don't have to put them through a whole nother review process.
Except for those, those aspects.
No, it would be part of this process.
And we would not have to have a separate site plan review.
Correct.
It would be part of.
Yeah, we would just kind of look further into those items during the CU process.
Yeah.
Right, is what you're saying.
That's right.
Yes, okay. Okay, and we, yeah, okay. I like that idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to make this a bureaucratic hassle, believe me, and then, but my one concern that, please don't take this the wrong way, but I think we would want to have somebody sign off on, whether it's the road commissioner or an independent engineer, is the site distance and the ability to turn into both of those drives, and so I don't know that we need to, you do need to hire an engineer to design drainage and all that other stuff, but I am concerned about the site distance, and the road commissioner basically said, he wants to see it, and he generally requires, you know, engineer signing.
There is, there is an actual driveway application that is signed off by the road commissioner, and that would, in doing that, it specifically addresses the site.
Distance.
Right, that, that application already exists.
That's what I was talking about.
Right.
At the beginning of this whole thing.
Yes.
Yes.
So, that may.
Does that exist?
Right, but that's something to apply for, it's not something that's already been approved.
Correct.
But what it gives.
But what I'm suggesting is, if you apply for it and it is approved, then you're meeting that, our concerns.
That's a formal way to get the road commissioner to sign on.
Exactly, he doesn't have to have someone else do that analysis, and there's not a lot of expense that goes with it, it's just through the road commissioner.
Very good idea.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, because there is a campsite on this property, or it's proposed, do we need to look at the campground regs at all?
I don't think so.
No, it's not, it's not a campground.
And they've got specific, it's limited to one, so it's not a campground.
Okay.
By definition.
Okay.
By definition, it's not a campground?
That's right.
Okay, I didn't.
Definition is two or more, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I missed that, so good.
And then my other, another question I have is, so, we talked about limiting it to fifty people.
Yeah.
Right, and did we say, did I hear something about twenty cars? Are we limiting the cars, or, maybe that was just something I heard?
I think that your initial comment was, when you're looking at fifty, you're looking at maybe two people per car, and you're looking at twenty-five, I think that was, max.
Yeah.
Because that would help you with the design of the parking lot, right, if we could say, except for the Christmas tree event, and that was my last question I have, is are we including that event in this, like, the big, we including that, like, we can say fifty people except for these other events.
Yep.
And the market, right, there's a Christmas market that.
Yeah. That's the only one, right, that's the big?
Yeah.
Except that, okay.
Which begs the question, where do they park, if you have more, you know, if you?
I mean, is, is it, I mean, when, during our tree farm season, we have parked, you know, you know, we have the overflow parking area and the area that we showed you today, the, the main area, where, I mean, the numbers that we put in there are based on actual numbers of what vehicles we have parked in those spaces safely, and, you know, with, again, with parking staff, you know, and that's when we're at max capacity for our tree farm, and then at that point, when we're max capacity, we tell people, you know, to go away and, and.
Come back.
Come back, you know, yeah.
That's something to note too, right? You guys do actually turn away people, right, if it does get maxed out.
Yeah, I mean, we've turned people away, you know, and, I mean, and, you know, often what happens is like, you know, it's like, hey, wait a minute, and someone leaves, we bring the next person in, you know.
I do want to comment on comments, initially, when the bus was in resource protection, they were very proactive in moving that bus, so that it's no longer in resource protection.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would join, I think you, you could get kudos for working with the neighbors and.
Yeah.
With us in this thing, I think.
Absolutely.
And correct, so.
Well, thank you, it's good to hear some positive comments. And, you know, I think just overall, you know, I think, you know, we're willing to, like, work through whatever next steps we need to, and we're not trying to do, you know, we're not trying to do a green station, we're trying to do something that's, it's, it's a relatively pretty small scale, you know, thing, I mean, I know it can sound big, but like, we also, you know, in terms of the requirements to just, you know, yeah, we just don't want to have to go through a huge, you know, site plan process where we're spending thousands of dollars to, you know, be able to be approved to have twenty-five cars in a grass lot, you know, I mean, I recognize, like, we need to go through these processes to make sure we're safe, and that, you know, that the traffic flow is good, and I just want to make sure that, like, the requirements mirror the size of the operation, in whatever way that can, you know, work with the, the land use ordinances and the requirements, but have, you know, and you're saying, not going through bureaucratic, you know, trying to get that to a place where we can have, you know, appropriate, and make sure that people are safe, make sure that we can, you know, do something that benefits the community, so that's, you know, my hope as we move through this process.
I think part of the difficulty is what we were hearing tonight and on the sidewalk, is that you're going to rely upon staff people to direct people where to park, how to park, you're relying on staff rather than design to address some of the safety issues, and that's a concern, because what if those staff aren't there, what if they're not qualified? That's part of the concern, that the conditional use criteria don't rely upon a person being there to address this, like, a site distance issue, so that's part of what we're dealing with.
I think to that point, is I don't know that you need to spend a lot of money on a design, but I don't believe, maybe you can cram them in there, but again, it depends upon a lot of things, I would like to say, you to say, the hundred twenty-five feet is an example, if it's a, most parking spaces are nine feet, so that's thirteen, thirteen parking spaces, so you got thirteen on one side, you got probably plenty of room on the other side, so draw it out, just, you know, a simple two-scale sketch, you know, that you go down, so it's not, you don't have to hire an engineer, you don't have, just so that we can say, well, you know, you're parking on the street, but you said you had enough, something that we can hold on and say, yes, they have enough parking spaces, here's how they plan to get twenty-five cars in the spot.
Right, initially, if you was talking a hundred and twenty-five, if we're looking at nine feet, twenty, you're looking at a hundred and eighty feet, with a combination of where we parked tonight versus overflow, I would think it would be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
But it's sketching that out and seeing it on paper that.
So, I did give a parking sketch, but in the packet, and so I just want to make, like, just so I'm clear, because I gave you something, and I want to see what, what, what else you need in that.
I think it just, just, my opinion, something very similar, but using kind of the design criteria for parking spaces.
I think it's in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, six and a half feet.
That George was talking about, sort of up there.
Six and a half feet's not in there, so if you just draw that same thing, that if you use a hundred and twenty, that is.
Show that you meet the aisle with required. Show that you meet the aisle with requirements, the parking space requirements, and that's in section eight. Eight point, um, six.
Three, yeah.
C is access, and E is parking lot layout and design. And all of the dimensions are there.
Okay, yeah, so again, it doesn't have to be fancy.
Yeah, but it should be accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, just as an aside, I, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in, where does, I didn't find anywhere that it said two, two or more camping spaces. Is that, I didn't find that in camping.
Maybe in our, um.
Is it in definition?
Definition of campground.
I'm good.
Yep.
I'm good.
Yep.
Okay, so now what? Do we?
I've got a couple more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure I understand, cause I wanna get it on the record, so you said no weddings.
Yeah.
But what about bar mitzvahs, birthday parties, retirement parties, which could be just, you know, as noisy or whatever, right, what's your commitment?
Yeah, I mean, again, those would all fall under the event restrictions we've placed, so, under fifty people, we would have a maximum of, nine P M cutoff, whether it's bar mitzvah, a birthday party, or a memorial. And, you know, and then it would be a baby shower, you know, I mean, any of those things, I mean, yeah, the same restrictions, and we would have no more than two events per month with amplified music. So, you know, if it's a baby shower with no amplified music, yeah, we could have more of those, but if it's anything, you know, that's how it's live band for the baby shower.
Yeah, we just wanna, the rule, cause twenty years from now, you know, your kids may be running the show and saying, what the heck did dad, did dad commit to here, you know? So that, I just wanna get it on the record.
Yeah.
Okay, and again, not that I don't trust you and believe you, my timekeeper says you're very trustful.
What other questions?
I think that's it for me.
I didn't have any others.
I think that was enough for me.
So we think you maybe start the review next time, or, or is there things that we are asking?
Options for, for moving forward with the application, okay? It sounds like the board wants to see a parking plan that meets all the requirements of the site plan review criteria. Okay, so they can prepare that, in the meantime, I had prepared for tonight's meeting, in case you didn't hit any stumbling points like this, conditional use criteria form, to go down through each of the criteria and record findings. What I will do is go through, for the next meeting, and prepare findings based on tonight's discussion. And then at the next meeting, you can supplement those, and then, and I'll also draft some proposed conditions related, relating to what's been talked about tonight, which is the last page of this. So hopefully, with the submission of a, of a site plan for the parking and access, and then also you discuss having them apply to the road commissioner for, for a street par, opening permit.
Correct.
Would that be for both accesses, or just one?
I, I would think it would be both, based on the overflow area.
They're gonna be using that for overflow parking.
Do they apply to Calvin, or do they apply to D O T and copy Calvin?
No, it's Calvin.
It's a town road.
It's a town.
Right, right.
So any, I'll draft some proposed conditions of approval based on tonight's discussion, and, like, on the event limits and those sorts of things. So hopefully, at the next meeting, assuming they come up with a parking plan that meets all the requirements, you'd be in a position to make a decision on the, on their application.
Right.
Okay, I, I think that sounds good. Do we need to go through those, are there any questions?
I think you can.
Were looked at, are you comfortable?
What, maybe this would help the applicant, if we look through really quickly.
Here, I'll pass these out, and you can just run right down through them.
The site plan review criteria is what I was thinking of, so we talked about pulling in D.
The parking.
Yeah, the parking.
The rest of it is landscaping, lighting.
Yeah, do we, any of those are?
Again, you don't need to go looking for them, if they come up during your conditional use review, you can use whatever you need from there.
Okay.
Well, I think lighting is always important, I don't, what, what I saw on site today wasn't bad, but, you know, if we're gonna, look, light, light pollution is a potential issue, so.
It's also safety for adequacy of lighting.
Yes, so I think, knowing that, you know, people walking at nine o'clock tonight to a parking space, I, I think it'd be good to know what the lighting plan is to, to do that. And again, nothing fancy, just show us where you're gonna put lights, you know, and then, the, our issue is like, are they downward facing, or are they, if you're gonna put, I don't, I don't think you're putting pole lights up, so.
No.
But if you're using ground solar lights like you've got out there, just so that there's some spots that we know where, how people get to that hot second parking lot, or a parking lot in general.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my biggest concern, is, is knowing that it's, again, safety kinds of things, thank you.
So are you looking for a lighting plan?
I think showing it on that drawing, yes, I guess, not how many amps are going off the property line or any of that kinda stuff, but just where would you put lights to, so people can safely get to the parking lot.
Okay.
Right.
And you've, you have that out there, I mean, how do they get to the bus, how do they, you know, what kind of safety? So just put a dot on something that, you know, simple that.
Yeah, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just.
I mean, yeah.
I know you wanna do it well, but it's just easier if it's all on paper.
Yeah.
Easier for us, at least. Uh, sorry, interrupted the whole, what do we have a discussion about?
So if you wanna just run down quickly and look at each of the, um, conditional, seven conditional use criteria, and see if any other issues might come up that they could address before we get there.
I agree.
So you can, John, just lead them right down.
I will try to lead as best I can, so public health impacts, Alan addressed, you know, some of the sanitary conditions. So you've got buckets under something. Is there any, how do you do food service, I guess that would be a question, again, not to drag this out.
We, we're not doing food service.
Not catering anything?
No, I mean, if, we would, like, if there is, you know, someone wanted catered food, then they would have a caterer.
I gotcha, I, I'm thinking of hand washing, that kinda.
Yeah, I mean, and, and so, I mean, we do have hand sanitizer, and then when we set the sink, we'll have additional hand washing there. We, we, you know, occasionally we'll have potlucks, but that's, you know, just the community.
And Chief Tripp, I think, said he volunteered to be the town sanitary guy, so work with him on.
Yeah.
And I think, I think it's important to say, even if we agree in this passes, you still have to meet before you get your.
Yeah.
Permits and all that other stuff, still have to.
I, I used to actually own a restaurant, so I'm very familiar with health and safety standards, and, yeah, but yeah, we're not, we're not doing that.
Okay. Next, any other, any other sanitation issues?
No.
Uh, pu, traffic safety?
We've discussed it all.
Yeah, I think we're good, public safety? You're not running a rifle range or anything like that?
Thank you very much.
Nope.
No fireworks.
I like fireworks.
My dog doesn't.
Okay, environmental impacts. Sedimentation, erosion. I didn't see anything, that if you don't dig a hole, dig a, do a whole bunch of foundations and stuff, I can't see that you're gonna have any.
And everything's pulled out of the R P too, so that's very helpful.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, scale and intensity of use. Physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, and proximity to other structures.
That's been discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think your, your commitments to nine P M and limiting number of events. Noise and hours of operation. I think you've made commitments to limit the noise and, and limit the hours of operate, cause the biggest thing seemed to be late night.
Yeah.
Whether it was nine fifty or ten thirty, but, okay, and there is a rule, there is a decibel level between seven P M, seven A M, so.
That's a, that's a continuous decibel level too, so.
Yeah.
Very hard to.
Right title or interest, we've gotten the deed that says you, that they own parcel forty-three and.
But actually, that's a good point, so you lease the back end of it, are we, is that part of it?
Back, not, not before you.
Go, yep.
But you have the right, I, because.
Yeah, we have a ninety-nine year lease on the Hunter's ten acre, so.
Right.
So your people could walk back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Financial technical ability, I don't see, I don't see that as an issue.
We just need to see, um, see something from the bank, right, like, numbers or a letter or something?
They've indicated the cost, estimated cost of their project in the application, and.
Right.
When do we require that bank?
Again.
Is that more a?
Yeah, if you're looking at substantial improvements, then you'd be wanna look at, to make sure that, like, if it involves stormwater detention, you wanna make sure that they get the money to do it.
I don't think this does, I mean, I, I think they're.
Minimal, okay.
And I think that's it.
That's it.
And then, conditions of approval, Georgia, I think we've kinda discussed the site plan, we wanna see that. I mean, if, if it's there and we're happy with it.
I think it's gonna be more the operation discussion that you've had, like, limits on time, limits on.
Absolutely, the number of events.
Those sorts of things, yeah, and you can add more next time, if you, if it comes out of this.
Yep. And I think we need to be clear about Christmas market and number of people, you know, except, fifty except for Christmas markets, so. Okay, I think that's what I had from this one, so, I do appreciate you've worked with us and worked with everybody.
So if I can just, I wanna just reiterate, so I'm clear, what you, so a parking plan, that really look at all the criteria incorporating both the, the primary parking and the overflow, making sure that's to a proper scale and to the, with the, um, the aisles and the sizes required, and whatever that was, the eight point.
Six C three.
Um, and then applying to the road commissioner for the street opening.
Right, it, yeah, it's a driveway application.
Driveway application.
Right, and then I, it is on the town website.
Okay.
If you can find it.
For both entries.
It's tough, yeah, sometimes navigating through the website, it might be on the forums.
It's getting better.
It is getting better.
And then just additional some, as we then look at lighting plan, and just what, being clear about the lighting that we would.
I think just something simple, so we're gonna have, you know, whether it be solar lights or stadium lights, you know, that would probably not get approved.
Yeah.
But, yes, just something simple.
Disco balls, no.
Inside the barn, that don't go outside.
Okay, great, and so then, we should, um, plan to get that to you.
Two weeks before the meeting?
Two weeks before the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, so then, and hopefully the, with the road commissioner, I don't know how quickly that happens, uh.
He's, Calvin's pretty good.
Okay.
I think if you go to Calvin and said, they made me do this, Calvin, he, he would respond.
And then, um, so we could plan to come back to the November meeting for.
November second.
November second, um, for hopefully approval at that point.
Yeah.
All right.
Or start the review.
Should be.
Review, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, I guess, if, if, you know, we do these things and meet those requirements that.
Well, based on our discussion tonight, I don't see any other roadblocks.
I don't either, I mean, I, I don't, I threw a couple of roadblocks up tonight, and.
Yeah.
Site plan and stuff, but I, but I don't, I think those are out of my head now, so I think.
Great, yeah, I just wanna anticipate any of those, so we can make sure.
We may have two more members, but I mean, I think, they, I will ask them to vote next time, they have to watch the movie and, read all the minutes and stuff, so they should come fairly well prepared, they're good, reasonable people.
All right, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I just want you to know, we don't pay the timekeeper.
I wasn't expecting that.
See, yeah, see him, so, uh, thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, we'll move on to the next thing, we've covered, uh, new business. We have before us a request to amend the approval for the Bowie Hill subdivision, to remove note alone, which is the, uh, destroy, the requirement that could not destroy, demolish Parker School. So I think we, is that what you're here for? Oh, okay, are, and you are, we'll get to, we'll, we'll get to you in a second. So I think, you know, we had that requirement on them, I think they've gone through the process of getting a structural engineer or an engineer to say that it's not cost effective to move and really not salvageable. And I think the town had already decided that it is a hazard. And so, this would allow them, if we approve it, would allow them to, uh.
Demolish it.
Tear it down, demolish it, and, um, so, does that sound right?
Well, it was very, yeah, it was very interesting reading, I mean, it was a thorough investigation by structural engineers, and it's not salvageable. And we have the letter from the chair and treasurer of the historical society, and they're, they're in agreement that it should be demolished.
And there's been Facebook postings from the historical district saying, we tried, but, you know, we can't, it's not worth it, so I think.
Right.
I think that is there, so.
I missed a lot.
So we don't want you to think it completely wastes your time, uh, we could probably ask you what, what you wanna say. Announce your name and.
Gender shows all the pictures.
What you'd like to say about the project.
Uh, sure, um, my name's Jonathan LaBozze, I'm co-owner of Bowie Hill subdivision. When we, uh, went, we're going through the approval for the subdivision, um, we knew that this was a, a, a sticky area, so to speak, and it was kinda muddying the waters, so we, um, kinda set it aside into the open space of the subdivision. So basically, you know, we're not gonna touch this building, you know, it's not an area that we're gonna develop. And then, you know, just so that, kind of, could, we could streamline the approval of the subdivision, and we didn't have to think about, you know, there are already so many things that have to be thought about when approving a subdivision, that this was kinda removed from that process. And, uh, then received demolition permit, which, to be honest with you, I wasn't expecting to receive from a past code enforcement officer, and that kinda set things in motion, uh, then I received a call from the town asking, uh, there were complaints about that. I said, no problem at all, um, let's, you know, press pause on this and go through the, the process to, uh, to prove to the town that this is the right, the right, um, step to take, uh, and, and hire the, the appropriate professionals to, uh, help prove that. And basically, we brought everyone on board from the historical district society, the historical.
District.
District.
Commission.
Commission, to, uh, to the code enforcement officer, to structural engineers, to a house mover, Joe Bia, you know, who's been doing it for forty years or something, and basically got everyone on board that, yes, although the ordinance is state, we cannot demolish a, a structure that's either church or, um, or a schoolhouse over a hundred years old. It's proven that not to our fault, in terms of the owners of the property, because we're recent owners, um, it's beyond repair, and that we're going to, by demolishing it, A, for safety, it's necessary, and B, you know, we're gonna be able to memorialize that, that schoolhouse in an appropriate way. So, in my opinion, uh, we brought all that into a concise package, that kind of lays out our game plan, why we did it. It's not just my opinion, it's a wide variety of people's opinion. And, um, we're here to discuss that, if there are any opinions discussed.
Well, I, the only two things I would have is, um, you are gonna memorialize the fact that Parker Schools was what, my wife went there through fourth grade, so.
What?
Yeah. I don't favor it, sad, but she knows it has to go, not that that matters.
That's a common sentiment that everyone's.
Not, not that I ever listened to, it's on TV, never mind. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm delaying the inevitable, you're gonna memorialize it, and then the historical folks asked you to save anything and give it a value and give it to the code enforcement guy before you demolish. I don't know that there's anything of value in there, but would you?
I think, actually, if it's okay, can I see that, let's just read what they say there, cause I don't think it says everything, I think it says.
Things of values.
Artifacts.
You have agreed to set aside any artifacts and significant pieces of wood that the historical committee can use for memorializing the school building in picture frame or frames, perhaps a bench made from the wood, or even significant sized stones from the foundation, which could possibly be used as a plaque holder at the side of the old schoolhouse, so not everything, just like.
Enough so that they can use that actual material to create a plaque or something.
And my recommendation is to work with the code enforcement guy and get a feel, cause I think he's probably, if I'm not mistaken, he's kind of been volunteered to do that, or are you gonna bring it, what do you plan to do with it?
Alan won't be involved. Alan won't be involved, it, it, it's, it's up to the historical society.
So you're gonna set it aside?
Yeah, we're gonna set aside, you know, I'm gonna bring, you know, they have one of their members is carpenter, and I'm gonna, um, before it's, before it's demolished.
You've got a plan.
Yeah, you're working with them.
Then, then that's good, I think that answers the question, so, is there a motion to, a, a motion?
The motion would be to amend the Bowie Hill subdivision plan to remove note number eleven.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, raise your hand, we're done, and thank you for working with everybody.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, no, my pleasure.
You'll need a new Mylar for recording and we'll get it signed.
Correct.
And then, uh, you'll.
I'll just wait for your email of when it's, when there's a, will you use the copy that I gave you?
No, you need to bring a Mylar.
I'll bring a My.
For signing for the recording.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'll bring it and drop it off here, and then you guys can get this signed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get it, he'll take care of that, sooner rather than later, cause it's a thank you, no, that's good, thanks for your time. And thanks for working with everybody, I, they, people do appreciate that.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
How can I ever thank you?
Thank you for hanging in there.
Yes, I didn't, I thought he could pick out while he's here, probably done him first, um.
Well, it could've.
They asked.
Yeah, well, sorry, it's, it's only eight o'clock, um, so do we have any more questions, I cut it, the discussion short about the next week. Any more affordable housing, road, uh, whatever, um, I think you know him, Brian.
No.
Sorry, uh, would you just kinda follow up, make sure he's got his application in?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think George did, and I think.
I, again, I don't get involved in.
None of this, no, I think.
Getting planning board members on.
No, no, that's all we're saying, it was just passing the info along, but I think that's what George did already, so I saw the email, and I think, so Brian, I think understands.
Okay.
What he has to do and.
The reason I bring that up is cause, with, just the three of us sitting here tonight, I'd like to fill that slot, Tyler did have, is it okay to have this discussion now? Tyler did, is interested in moving up to, uh, the big leagues, whatever we wanna call ourselves.
Did you wanna adjourn, adjourn, adjourn the meeting and then just?
Can we do that?
Or, or?
Yeah, it's not agenda items.
Oh, okay, motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Me is adjourned.
Yep, um, so we just wanna get somebody.